Tom, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, no, we don't. We should go, we should.
I can report a slack one now.
How about, we need a motion to open.
I'll make a motion open.
Uh, second.
No, it's second, it's well.
Okay, well, uh, I'd like to welcome everyone that's here and everyone outside watching to the December sixteen meeting of the Attorney's Order of Appeals, uh, tonight. And my name is Tom Winfield, uh, to my immediate left is Casey Green, to my right is Mark McCabe and Dan McDonald, Julie Howes is the secretary. We're here to, uh, to discuss one item, um, I'm gonna, I'll read the, uh, the same, uh, agenda item, which is, application two thousand fifteen dash seven, made by Craig and as, Tedeschi. Now, for premises located at sixteen Sylvan, Sylvan Street, plot sixteen lot ninety-seven, in a RV residential zone for a variance to build a garage, according to all applicable sections, uh, following home bylaws, including section three oh eight. And I gotta tell you that, that, uh, it doesn't make any difference, except, uh, we do only have four people, but you need four votes anyways. Uh, if you had one more, if one, it's a better deal, but just throw me out, so, uh, with that in mind, yeah, with that in mind, why don't you tell us again what, what you wanted to do?
So you wanna come up to the mic over here?
Yeah, I want you to come up here, we're, we're, we're a little.
Right, hit the button there, cause it says red.
Yeah, just hit the, there you go.
Set it down and, oh, wait, we're gonna plug it in and get the heat in there.
Okay, no, no.
Get the heat in there.
Get the juice in there.
Slatten.
Yeah, yeah. If you say the wrong thing, we hit the button.
That's it, the chair goes right.
Yeah, 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 that goes up.
My intention's out to build a twenty-six by forty, single-story garage, with twelve-foot walls, ceilings, um, my own personal use. Based on the layout of my property, where my septic, my leach field, the area where I have room to put it is gonna be closer to Mr. Fontaine's property, which my request is to be about five feet off of the property line. Um, if I move it further to the, to the driveway side, not gonna be.
Hold on just a second, I'm making sure we all got it, right?
You got, you got it there?
I have it here, I'm looking at it.
No, that is, it's, uh, keep going. I'm making sure that we're all.
It's on the back of that.
Tom, can I ask?
Oh, it's on the back, okay, great.
Cause on here, it doesn't say what the proposed setback would be.
I forgot to write it on.
No, he's gonna get into that.
We're working it, yeah, yeah, we're working it. Thank you for catching that though, that's good.
Follow the vibe.
Yeah. Fade away on that sharpie, he's looking good tonight.
That was my drawing.
Yeah.
I forgot to put it on there. If I move it, the fifteen feet up to the, into the driveway, I'm actually not gonna be able to have access to get into the garage doors that are gonna be closer to the house. I can't move it any further over to where my shed is, because that's where the leach field and the D-box is off of my septic. So that's why I'm requesting the five feet.
Okay, alright, so can I, uh, let me, let me ask you some questions?
Yes, sir.
Why were we here? How, how'd you, where were you gonna put your garage doors?
I was gonna put a twelve footer here, and a twelve footer here.
Twelve feet wide?
Yeah, two twelve-foot doors, regular, yeah, yeah, no, not commercial, not commercial.
Okay, so, so, uh, has anyone got a pencil? Uh, a little color than, uh, there's no way you could put it.
I got blue there.
Okay, if you look at it more, you're gonna, you're gonna.
I mean, if, if, I could.
Here's what I, here's what I wanna, wanna talk about.
I'm far from the house to the garage, is there, I mean, it's, they say there's no space, but.
There would, the, the, the way I measured it out, I'm gonna have about twenty feet between the house and the garage.
Craig, wh- uh, you know, you wanna, you wanna put a twelve-foot doors in?
Correct.
Are you a bad driver, or what?
She is.
Cause it's forty feet wide.
Yeah, no, no, but to see, you're, you're going twenty-six wide, nine-foot doors, I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I've got a lot of houses with nine-foot doors, you know, are the cars on.
Twenty-six deep, forty long.
Yeah, but see, twenty-six, you, you could put two nines, nine, nines are only eighteen, you know, so you, you could put two nine-to- or ten-foot doors, uh, on the gable ends, and slide that garage right here, and come in, you just come in like this and, and go out. That's what it is.
I, I.
Doesn't seem like the width is there, sure.
I, yeah, I, I, I follow what you're saying aesthetically, I just don't think that that's gonna.
Do you guys understand?
No, I'll just repeat again with that.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is if you slip, if you slid it up and got it, and you got it fifteen feet, you could build it like this, put the garage doors, because you, you, well, twelve is twelve is twenty-four, twenty, it'd be tight, you could, you two, two twelve.
Yeah, it would be.
Gap on each side for the opening doors. You could, but, 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 I mean, a ten-foot door is still pretty good, I mean, you know, it, it, even your truck, your big trucks only bother me.
I was hoping to not lose part of the driveway, though, that was the only problem.
Yeah, well.
Width isn't the problem though, Tom, it's, it's, it's the depth and the distance from the house and to the, obviously.
Yeah.
Obviously, the setback.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if you just shift it there.
Then I'm gonna lose my whole driveway.
There's no driveway.
There's no driveway.
Yeah.
Well, it's quite a bit, it's, it's quite a ways back from the, from, I mean, it's from, uh, uh, Sylvan, so, Sylvan.
Sylvan.
From Sylvan in, it goes, it goes up and around and down, it's quite a ways in there, I mean, it's, it's probably.
What, my driveway?
Yeah, uh, two hundred feet?
No.
No way, no way, no way.
No way.
No way.
Maybe forty feet, fifty feet.
No, yeah, there's, there's no way it's two hundred feet. My whole, my, the whole front of my property is a hundred and eighty-four, corner to corner.
This is your lot, right?
Yeah.
So this is your, sorry, house?
Yeah, and I don't care about drawing on this, doesn't matter. My, my, the entrance to my driveway is here, so that goes up.
That's septic though, it's gonna, oh no, that'd be way down, that'd be.
My septic tank is here.
Be way down here, we're a bar.
Back, my piping goes across, then it separates, then it splits, I got my D-box here.
Oh, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna. The lines.
And then another one here.
Why is this quickly?
That's the way they designed it.
See, I don't, it's not to scale, so I don't know how much room is in there.
That's the way they built it, and I have.
He said it was twenty feet.
Probably twenty feet in line.
Yeah, it's, cause this is, I mean, obviously my drawings are, but, and the sheds more over here than it is over here.
How far is it from here? And, uh, that, yeah, what about that, Craig, what about, yeah, it's an idea there, it's too, it's too close, it's not, it's.
See, the drawing's not to scale, so I'm not, I'm not critical of you on that, it's just, I, I, it's, I'm trying to visualize what is. How far is it from the house to your property line?
In the back.
Cause you say this is woods here, but where's your pro, where's your property line?
My property line's here.
Is this one?
No, that's, that's Norman's house, this is Norman's property right in here.
You just labeled it as woods, but this is not your land?
No, cause if it was, I wouldn't be having a property.
Wouldn't have a problem, so, how far is it from your house to here?
Fifty feet, forty-seven feet.
Forty-seven feet. I'm gonna swing this around here.
See, they're just the variances, you have to make the argument, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that, you can't do it any other way. If there's another way to fit it without the variance. There's no way you can do it over here, the house is already.
Then you need, then you need, then you need to explore that possibility.
I'm, I'm already fifteen, I'm sold for here.
You need fifteen on the side. No, but if you put the garage here, would you have enough room between the house?
No, this is, this is my porch. You know, you're. Porch, the bulkhead, it's just, it's not gonna fit here, see, and this is what we've, for the last year, we've been trying to map it out and figure out where, whether I angle it. Unfortunately, and as I talked to Norman last year about this, after we had tried to figure out where we were.
How much land do you have here as a front?
It's the front of the house, but it goes downhill.
How about only, on the, Craig, on the left-hand side?
Can't do anything over there.
They look awful.
I can't put a garage, I mean, that's.
He'd be coming in off Sylvan.
I'd be, I'd be telling, I'd be telling Kathy to dig it, to dig through the snow for two hundred feet to go to the garage.
But there's no way to put it here.
Can't put it down there.
Cause it's a detached garage, you're gonna walk to the house no matter what you do.
Yeah, up here, I'm, I'm, I'm up on a hill.
Well, how steep is that, what's the grade?
Probably like this.
Yeah.
Probably like this.
And.
How much room do you have?
I have a tunnel over here, but down here.
Yeah, yeah. We both, we both been saying the same.
This is like a, it's like a culvert with my neighbor.
Is that why it's in here?
Well, it's not, but it gets, it's saturated, because my neighbor's house over here, he's got a three-car garage here.
Weird.
And when they built it, this goes down, so this whole area fills in with water.
And where's your septic box?
That's my tank.
That's the tank.
Yep.
And the, and the.
And there's two boxes, it's, it's a, it splits, for some reason, there's two D-boxes.
And you have two leach fields, or there's a reserve area?
It's gotta be a reserve, but it goes over.
Where's, where's the leach bed?
So you have an as-built plan, and that leach field's both of these, or this whole area?
It was like that when I bought the house.
You know the area over there, but the septic is just like, missing out on the foot of it.
That's why I can't put anything on that side of the driveway.
How big's the septic field though, I mean, the septic field's probably not more than a quarter of an acre. It goes.
Okay, I wouldn't think it'd be twenty, forty, something like that, uh, how many bedrooms you have?
How many bedrooms?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's three.
Three bedrooms, yeah, I would think twenty, forty, but, but, are you saying that the, the, uh?
Twenty by forty, eight hundred feet?
The D-box.
Eight thousand feet.
Is going on, and, and, and the pipe.
Pipe goes under the driveway, goes under the driveway, goes across, and then where my bush is up at the top of the driveway.
Yep.
There's a, there's a box, and then it splits to two more, and then it goes out, that's how they built it, I don't.
It's only eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, yeah.
So it seems like there's a lot of land over here.
Yeah, but then I'd be.
The septic's only eight hundred square feet, alright?
I know, but if he puts it, if he puts it farther, closer to the neighbor, he's gonna be running over his septic every time he drives.
But it's a hill. That's, I. Yeah, yeah, and then I'd have to be bringing in fill and everything else to, to level it off, because that's, that's, it's hill.
Understand that, but depending on, and it's not to scale, so it's hard to decipher.
Right.
But if the garage could go this way or something, I mean, the street's over here, right?
Yep.
So it's in the rear of the property, so I mean, it's not gonna be an aesthetic thing if it's.
Kind, it kinda is, cause I mean, that, this side of the drive, the reason.
But that's not a factor under the variance law, Tom, is it?
No, it isn't.
Aesthetics has a bearing on the law.
Craig, go, let me, yeah, really though.
Yeah.
Uh, how far, I mean, twenty-six is a, is a good, I mean, usually, I mean, not usually, but I mean, I.
I won't be able to get a truck and run a plow.
Yeah, a stand, a standard garage is twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, forty, you could put a, you could put a sixteen-foot door in, yeah, and you're gonna go twelve foot, so you, you, you go with a sixteen-foot door, you can get a truck in there, a car easily. It seems that, uh, there's.
The issue is that, is the depth.
There's more, I, I would think there's, there's more buildings out there with garages on a gable end versus the other end, uh, at least, at least, I mean, the ones I go, always.
Then I'm gonna lose my driveway.
I always go.
So it's defeating the purpose.
Cause you, cause you, see, the gate, the gable ends, you didn't, you didn't have to worry about headers, so, uh, we always put the garage doors on the gable ends, uh, but at any rate, uh, how, how far from your driveway, Craig, to your property line?
Um, thirty feet. Thirty feet, from the edge of my driveway to the property line is thirty feet.
To your property line?
That's why I was saying, if I come in five, I'm gonna be eating into the driveway, but just enough to where I can pull a vehicle up and, and pull in without losing my driveway. Because if, because if that's the case, then I would just tear the whole backside of the house off and, and attach it to the house, but I don't wanna do that, because then I'm running into other issues. Well, I've got a, I got a fieldstone foundation, and I don't wanna disturb that, because if I do, then I'm, then I'm, then I'm into jacking up the house and pouring a, and pouring a concrete foundation, and then I'm talking, uh, a hundred and fifty grand, where I wasn't planning on spending a hundred and fifty thousand.
It's a lot for a garage.
Yeah.
So, right now, you, he's proposing, he's gonna be.
Tom, there's a different diagram, could you?
Yeah, I did.
You did, you did it on.
I did it.
This, this was surveyed by somebody.
Yeah, this was done prior, this isn't even, this isn't even the house anymore.
It's a mortgage survey, isn't it?
Yeah, the pool's not there anymore, and the house.
The, the house.
It's an addition, so the house is in.
Yeah, the, the house goes this way now, I've, I've added on another.
So the dri, the driveway's still coming in this way?
No, the driveway doesn't do that, the driveway, here's the road.
Yeah, show me your driveway.
Right there, slight curve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up.
And then this is the wood you're talking about here.
So as of right now, you wanna be only five feet away from the.
Either that, I mean, I can go seven and drop it to twenty-four feet.
But look like, this is a lot of land over here, tell, tell me why the, the configuration of the land would prohibit you from putting a garage over here, other than aesthetics?
Well, it's, it's, the property's groomed, they've got two-hundred-year-old trees, cherry trees there, and it's all hilly, it's not flat.
Yeah. Is it all ledge?
Yeah, it's all rock, I mean, I brought in a ton of wood, including.
It wouldn't look right there.
It wouldn't look right over there either, and then.
And you say that it gets wet over there?
And it gets wet down the bottom, where my neighbor is over here, where the Perkins built their garage.
So you're telling me the topography that's what prohibit you from?
Where, where does it get wet, Craig?
Down the bottom.
Cause the looks.
On the five, yeah, the far-left corner.
Over here?
Can't be the reason. What, no, I just, I, I, it's, it, it wouldn't be.
So, so Craig, if, if.
That wouldn't be feasible for me to do that, I'd be bringing in fill.
Craig, if, if you built it where the driveway is, where I drew it originally, if you built that.
Then I'll just, then I'll just tear the house apart and attach.
Now, how, how far would that be from the house? Cause your driveway doesn't from my, to the house.
I'd have a, I'd have a walk, yeah, it does, it's, the driveway, the driveway is three feet away from the house. So when you go up to my driveway, I've got a three-foot area where I've got plants next to the house, and the driveway is right where the stone wall is.
You know, but when it comes behind the house is what I'm talking about.
It stops right where it is.
No, it goes around the house.
No, it stops right here.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, the, the drawing doesn't show it, but how, how far from here to here from the house?
Three feet.
Three feet.
Yeah, this goes all the way. You come up. I mean, the bulkhead is sitting, there's a, there's a cement pad around my bulkhead, and the driveway's attached to it, so.
That's.
So if, if you, if you put the, if you cut it down, how wide's your driveway?
Twenty feet.
Twenty?
That's why I said I got fifty feet between the property line and the house. Now, if I cut it down, then I'm gonna have to tear down the deck I just did to reconfigure that. So it's, it's, it's kinda defeating the purpose as to what we're gonna do, and that's, again, I'm better off, if, if, if I gotta do it that way. I attach it to the house, but then again, I gotta jack the house up and pour foundation, cause I got fieldstone there.
If, if you went, if you got fifty feet from, from your house to your property line.
Yeah.
Take fifteen off that, you're thirty-five feet. You could very easily.
Thirty-five feet, and then.
Yeah, you could very easily build that garage lengthwise on, on your property, even, even if you don't go here, even if over here.
And then I'm losing my driveway.
No, even if you just go.
I'd, I'd have eleven feet.
You go fifteen and fifteen, you still can build that garage.
But then I'm losing the driveway.
No, I don't, I, no, I don't think you, I, 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 see, I'm drawing this all up, I, I, I think you.
You go fifteen.
You could lose some of the driveway, but, but no.
You go fifteen feet and twenty-six, it's twenty-six and fifteen is forty-one feet, so that's gonna leave me nine feet.
To the house.
Correct.
Yeah.
Nine feet.
I mean, you know, it could.
I'm better off just putting it, I'm better off just attaching it to the house.
No, but the point is, Craig, I, I think you can build it.
I won't, I'm not gonna bother doing it.
And meet, and meet the setbacks by, by just going fifteen feet, and then build it lengthwise.
Yeah, I won't bother doing it.
Put your doors on, on the gable end.
I won't bother doing it, it's a way, this was a waste of money, cause I'm not gonna, I ha, it, it's gotta be, I mean.
You see, the thing is, you can do it, you can do it.
You're absolutely correct, I can do that, but it's, it's not gonna work for me. It's not gonna work for somebody if I go to sell the house. That's, that's like, that's like, that's like me putting a house in Haverhill together, and having nine feet in between the house.
Will you be squeezing from getting there? Huh?
No. It's just not. It would look stupid.
Couldn't put a breezeway and kinda make it.
Again, again, if, to, to build the value of the house.
Yeah.
I'm killing my driveway. So I'm losing my parking. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, it's all minus, if I do it this way.
Forty-six.
It's all a minus.
He wants to.
No.
It's, it's the width, the width is, you see, my bond's twenty-eight by forty, but my bond is twenty-eight and wide, forty feet deep.
Yeah.
He's going the opposite.
I'm going the opposite.
It's gonna be a lot wider.
It's just not.
Deep, just coming to gable end.
Yeah, but the depth is.
Yeah, it's not, it's.
So, so it sets, it actually, it actually would set fifteen fifteen, right, you'd be here.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, I can see it, it's not the same usable structure.
Yeah, I can't.
Twelve-foot, bad, you'd rock a motorcycle in it.
Yeah, you know, you know, it's not, it would be nine feet, it's not even gonna, it's, just, it's, number one, it's, I know aesthetically, it's not part of the program, but it's not gonna look right, it's not. I know.
It won't work any other way.
Could you go eight feet off?
The argument won't work any other way.
I've, if, if I have to go eight, I'll go eight. I mean, Norman, Norman was expecting me to be inches, and you, you, two or three inches at least, I mean, but doesn't, that's what I'm saying, I mean.
I wouldn't have any problem with him doing eight feet off, it's not living space.
Yeah, well.
It's not living space, it's a garage.
I, I just think, I think, I think there's other places to go, that's all, I mean, you gotta.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom, you wanna read, you wanna read the legal standard, you got it?
Uh, I was talking, uh, what, if the other gentleman wants to speak, I'll get it right here, that's what I was.
Go on up, Norm.
Do you wanna speak?
Yeah, we want you to speak, yeah.
What do you want me to say?
For or against, Dave?
Yeah, for or against.
I'm for it.
Yeah, for or against.
What's your name, your address?
Norm Fontaine, address is twenty-one Philbrook Street. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna read it, just for the record, this is, uh, chapter forty-eight, uh, section ten, variances. Uh, the, the permit granting authority shall have the power, after public hearing, for such, for which notice has been given by publication and posting as provided in section eleven, and by mailing to all parties in interest to grant upon appeal or upon petition with respect to the particular land or structures, a variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaws, which such permit granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances related to, related to soil conditions, shape, comma, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, comma, financial or otherwise, comma, to the petitioner or the appellate, in that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially delegating from the intent of the purpose of such ordinance or bylaw, except where local ordinance or bylaw shall expressly permit variances for use. No variance may authorize a use, active, uh, uh, we're not talking about uses, we're talking on, on setbacks. So I, I, I don't, I'm not sure what the substantial hardship would be, I mean, the fact is, if you can build a twenty-six by forty-two garage on the land, it needs setbacks. Is it a hardship?
Here's, here's what I'm, I'm, I'm saying, okay?
Craig.
The topography on, on, over here, is sloped, and it's ledge, and it's not suitable for building, right, is that what you're saying?
You're talking on the left-hand side.
Okay, so this is out, so, if we're looking at the area between the house and property line, what you labeled as woods, okay? You know, can you squeeze it in there?
Let me give it the same way.
Right?
Yes, okay.
And you're saying that this is because of what, fifty feet?
Yeah, you see, uh, can I, can I, Craig?
Yeah.
Craig, Craig says it's fifty feet to the property line, so if you take.
From, from the, or the, or the foundation, cause you put a deck on it, the, the deck's not on here.
It's not fifty feet.
It's not fifty feet total, from the house to the property line, it's fifty.
To the property line. Fifty feet.
Yeah. From the house.
From the foundation.
What about the deck, and all any other of it?
While the deck stands out, that's out ten feet, so I'm forty feet now.
So you got forty feet to play with, and you'd be on the property line if you built it forty wide, which is what you wanna go.
I'd be right on the, well, no.
Depth.
Depth. Depth twenty-sixth. Length forty, that's why.
We have to remember, normal bond is usually deeper than it is wider, but he's going short because.
You know the one, you know the one on School Street? The one going up the hill on School Street, the four bay, the house that burnt, the four bay garage, that's what I wanna do without a second floor.
The house that burns.
But if you put that garage in, as, as Tom says you can, you wouldn't have an angle to access the doors.
Correct.
You wouldn't have any room.
No, no, well.
No, but then.
Doors wouldn't be on the, uh, long side, they'd be on the vehicle side.
So they'd have to come around.
Yeah, but then.
No, just drive into it.
No, I'd have to come up and come around, yeah, cause.
What if you want four bays?
Yeah.
Is it sloped?
You said two bays.
No, I won't, I'm gonna have two twelves, but the other, but the end of the garage is going to be a work area for me.
Yeah, so, I, I, you know.
But.
That, that's why I'm saying, Craig, you can build that garage twenty-six, forty-two on your property, come in the gable end, twenty feet of, 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 of two cars, and then the workbench on the other end, and, and you could do it probably without a variance.
And I understand that, but then I'm leaving nine feet between my house and the garage, so, it would, it. The hardship I'm claiming there is I'm, I'm losing my driveway, so I have no driveway anymore, and then I have nine feet in between my house.
And other. Other houses in the neighborhood have garages and driveways.
Correct.
Well, no, I mean, you're not, you're not.
So it's like extra parking space.
You're not losing your driveway.
I'll lose my driveway.
This part is parking space that you would still use.
Correct.
And, um. You, you, Craig, you've got, you've, you've got from, from Sylvan Street to your house.
Uphill.
And then beyond, that's right.
He's using this as parking area.
But I mean, that, but up top is flat, that's, that's, it's parking for the house.
It's good flat now right in front of it.
Let me ask you this, let me ask you this, if, if you were to give up some of that park and, and still maintain the character, that, yeah, create the hardship for you.
That's why.
What could you live with, I mean, that, uh?
Like I said, your box said eight feet.
You backed off eight feet.
I can, I can pull eight feet, I'm gonna, and I'll, I can do eight feet, I can drop down the garage size to twenty-four. I won't be able to put a truck with a plow in there, but I'm fine with that.
Cause we don't necessarily wanna one foot setback if you got more wiggle room on the outside.
No, I got five, no, I had five, I was I I was at five feet.
Five feet with a twenty six depth.
Correct. But if I gotta go eight feet, I'll drop the garage size down to twenty four. I didn't really wanna because I wanted to be able to back a truck in with my plow on it. And if I can't do that, then that's fine. I'll take the plow off and leave it outside. But, you know, I I didn't really wanna have to do that, but if I have to, then I gotta do what I gotta do.
Yeah, I think you gotta budget a little.
But I wanted to be able to have, see, the garage isn't gonna be attached to the house. So for us to be able to pull up into the driveway and unload groceries, or for me to back up to the dr- uh, back up to the deck and carry things in and out of the house. This way, if I build the garage there, I'm gonna have no access point to be able to back up to the house to to do anything. I can't get anything from the front door because the front door slopes down, it's downhill.
Your slope is kinda right here.
It's the whole front of the house.
But so why couldn't you marry the garage up to the house?
Yep, but it's so close to the.
Financially. It's, that's a financial restriction.
Couldn't you just build it right next to it? I don't understand why that's any more cost than.
Cause then I gotta dig next to the house.
If you're next to the house, you gotta.
And then then I'm then I'm gonna.
Then what do you have to do? I'm not a construction guy. You gotta get on frost line, or what are you?
No, what I have to do is I'm gonna have to support the house because I have a fieldstone foundation. So when I go to dig, my foundation's gonna crumble and things been there.
How tall is that building gonna be?
How tall's the building? I'm gonna do twelve foot walls.
Yeah, then yeah, then you gotta put a roof on it, so your roof's gonna be.
Correct.
So the S D's, the S D's would be looking at this big.
Big ugly thing.
The back of it.
The back of it.
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, well, it's property walls, and you're gonna have at least six foot, six or seven foot, uh, gables.
Yeah, so now, I mean.
It's gonna be twenty feet.
I mean, I know the property, I don't think that would.
It's not gonna, it's it's not gonna be conducive to the property.
Sounds like.
Value wise, it's it's gonna, it's gonna diminish the value of my property too.
I don't see a problem budgeting for the eight feet. It's not.
Sounds like there's gonna be a hardship tomorrow. I mean, what's the extent of the hardship?
Well, I, well, well, let me just, let me, let me run this by you, Craig.
How do you quantify it? How do you quantify the hardship?
Well, I I'm I'm I'm.
Well, qualify it.
I'm 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 more in in inclined, uh, if I, I'm gonna go on a chalkboard, so we all can see it. All right, okay. Did I do that, Charlie?
Yeah.
Yeah. Need a ride?
Yeah.
All right. What about this?
We need the guy that drew that, I mean, it's all pretty nice, you know?
I know. It's gonna be, uh.
Man, we measured this out everywhere.
I guess I have to get over here.
The house is over here.
Gotta make the legal standard though.
I do.
Mine looks like this, right? Deck where?
That's correct. It's closer to the, it's closer to the house, though. A lot, it's three feet off the house.
You got the deck right in between too.
And then you got the deck.
That's okay, that's all. Now, and then and then this comes up the hills.
Correct.
Okay, now, and your property line's down here.
Correct.
So what happens if we?
Well, it's closer than that, but.
What happens if we do something like this? Okay, so you come into it, okay? Come into it, and then all we're talking now.
We already thought about that, but then I'm but then I'm hindering the S D's because all they're gonna see out the back window of their house, which then they should have them here, is they're gonna see a monst- a monstrosity of a wall.
It's gonna, it's gonna see anyways.
Well, they're not, though, because it's gonna be further this way.
They're only gonna see the side of it where you want it to come out.
You're only gonna see the side of it. You're only gonna see the side of it.
Where I wanna put it now. What's on the Tom's side of the property? Cause there's woods behind the house.
I have bushes here.
Yeah.
There's my sheds here.
Yeah.
What I wanna do is come, I'll come eight feet off, the shed's gonna go away.
My next door, yeah, right there.
So it's, you follow me that that.
He doesn't have any woods, does he?
No.
I'm gonna cut the size of the garage now.
Six foot fence.
We we come like this, instead of just.
They also talked about this here, a variance.
The only woods that exist on up the top is diagram.
And I think, I mean, that might work, but. Does you follow it, Dan? You guys follow that?
Yeah, that kitty core thing is the garage itself.
Yes, and then what happens, oh, sorry, it's 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 small, but the but the 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 the.
Then what then what we're talking, we're actually talking about a variance of.
A corner.
A corner.
But, I mean, the corner.
So.
And and it might be twenty five square feet.
Exactly.
Eh, it's, and I don't eat, it's not.
You said the S D's are, is that them?
No, the S D's would be on this side over here.
Oh, over here.
Yeah.
So where the woods are, is that where you look?
If I look out my kitchen.
They're right on the other side.
Yeah, house is.
It doesn't go off.
And they don't, they wouldn't see this just because of the profile.
They wouldn't see it because of the profile.
My land, my next door.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, it's.
Then you'll have a standard during the winter time, I'll leave it at that. His addition is his fence right here. So he's about eighteen feet from the, and if not even that.
Not even that. I think it's fifteen feet.
Not even that. Fifteen feet. But I take care of the S D problem here. So, um, yeah, if they put it there.
No, 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 I'm talking over here, too. What I'm saying, if you get an angle, then 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 we're only talking about a variance
Yeah, at an angle now.
for this part over here, you see? So you're not total variance, we're we're trying to work a compromise.
Well, that's why I figured if I come off eight feet.
I don't see a problem with an eight feet. Eight feet, the whole back, it's not living space. The lights aren't gonna be on all the time, it's not gonna.
Well.
I know, I know, maybe I'm wrong.
The other thing, the other thing, well, the other thing is, I mean, this is not a.
I'm losing, I'm 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 gonna cut the garage size down.
Yeah, but this this isn't, this isn't a standard garage. I mean, a standard garage is eight foot wide, this is, this is a twelve foot, a twelve foot.
I know, right.
Standard garage is an eight feet wide.
Yeah. No, eight feet high. So, you know, you know, you're talking in in doors.
Well, it's not the height, it's the.
Well, it's a, it's gonna be a pretty substantial structure. If you're gonna have twelve foot, I believe.
I'm gonna have twelve foot ceiling heights inside the garage.
I know, that's that's a good sized garage.
The variance is for the setbacks.
What's the, what's the road?
Yeah.
I know, but yeah, but if it's reflected for the size of the.
Yeah. Barn. No, absolutely not. No, no. The way my house is designed.
It's not gonna have a second floor loft.
No, absolutely not.
And you're 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 on the land behind him, right?
Yes.
And there's, how how wide that land did you have in there? How wide is the woods wide?
I'm guessing twenty feet.
So it's twenty feet of woods. You have no problem with saying with, if he was eight feet off, and you saw it, and the building was there, and the sun, wintertime, the leaves fall, blah blah blah?
Yeah. The only time you're getting, the only time you can see through the woods is when.
Wintertime.
Yeah, you have no problem with that.
Okay, just to give an example, one block above that, uh, clock.
Yep.
Is the is the wall. And if you come down, one, two, three, four, down is is a standing garage. So you you're you're looking at a pretty substantial structure to be in a setback.
It's twelve feet tall.
Yeah, that's that's that's.
The ceiling height's gonna be twelve?
Yeah, then 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 you gotta.
So I go, so I go ten feet.
Then you gotta gable on top of that, and if you go, or if you're gonna go twenty four feet, and you're gonna go in, I say, a six twelve, that's gonna be.
What's the annual protection?
It's gonna be a s- probably gonna be a six or a seven pitch.
Yeah, I mean, so so you you're looking at another six or seven feet and twelve feet, see? So so you're looking at, uh, twenty feet, twenty feet. So now, the top of that garage, I I'm not sure if you you realize how big this is, but now you're up to one, two, three, four, five, and another, we're up another three, three high than here, which is where the gable is. That's a pretty good sized structure, uh, to be that close to the property line.
We have some very old cherry trees between us, and they get stamped with, I mean, really, there's there's very little you can see at all. My neighbor put up a twenty eight by forty barn, two story.
Look at the barn.
He unbrowed, and he's fifteen feet off.
Yeah. Yeah.
And.
But he meant, he had setbacks.
He meant the setbacks, but I mean.
This doesn't mean setbacks.
Right, I mean, but I don't see difference.
I don't think that's our question, is how, you know.
I don't think how tall matters. I every, you know something, if he put it seven feet closer to me, it wouldn't make any difference.
I think that's the point, though, is that, to be honest with where the setback is, twenty feet up's gonna be twenty feet up.
It probably won't even be twenty feet up.
But but my my point, though, is that it's not gonna change the the view. We have, there's a lot of, um, a lot of trees between us. And again, in the wintertime's the only time we ever see it, and I don't think any of us sit out on our decks in the wintertime, so we don't come worried about it.
You'd rather see the spine in the winter than rather than see him out there drinking beers on the deck.
No, whenever he has a beer.
I'm over having one.
Whenever he has a beer, he comes over.
It's a buffer.
None of these cheers.
It's a buffer.
Yeah.
So you talk, can you talk more about, what would the hardship be, how if you shrunk your driveway? It's just, it wouldn't be a driveway to park on.
It wouldn't be a driveway, I think.
A car on it or two or five?
If, well, again, if I shrunk the driveway, again, I don't, I I started at five feet, I I can, I can do the eight feet. I'll cut down part of the size of the garage if necessary, if it's not gonna work for that size.
You wouldn't just move it closer, you'd shrink it?
I would shrink it because the driveway adds value to the home. And if 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 in ten years or fifteen years or twenty years, I decide I'm gonna sell, and the garage isn't attached to the house, you've got a nine foot walkway between the house and the garage that is is useless. It's just useless. It's an alley.
It's hot on, it's like an alley.
So you you so you think that.
And you can't even use it because the bulk cap.
That's not normal for your neighborhood.
No, absolutely not.
Look, look, I got a question, though. If if you're gonna be, your driveway's twenty feet. Okay, so you think you're gonna be able to get a car or a truck in there and out of that in twenty feet?
Absolutely. Absolutely, because it's not gonna be setting.
Hold on, how how long's your truck?
My truck's sixteen feet. But here we go, where I said it's not gonna be directly behind the house, it's gonna be offset from the house. So where the shed is, so where the shed is.
And that bay on the left.
And that bay on the left, I can pull straight in. She's gonna be able to get in with her smaller car.
On the right.
On the right side, and then the far side is gonna be where my motorcycle lift is gonna be, my woodworking equipment and and all all of my my carpentry tools, all my tools. So that's, that was the intention. Was to be able to do it that way.
Well, Dan, I think I think you're right about convention. We'd we'd have to know exactly, if we're looking at the property, uh, from.
Yeah, this is why I didn't.
Tom, Tom, I think if if this driveway's gonna only be nine feet, I think that means the, it's a hardship on it. It doesn't fit any other way. So what's a normal driveway width, twenty feet?
Twenty feet.
Is it?
Well, no, a single driveway is.
Ten, ten.
Ten, twelve?
Mine's sixteen, and that's cause I got a shed, yeah.
Okay.
If it went sixteen, where would that put your numbers at? Cause that wouldn't take away from the value of your house, sixteen foot wide driveway?
That's probably gonna be where I am if I move the, if I move the garage eight feet.
So what the compromise would be, if you move eight foot setback, you'd have a sixteen foot driveway, which would be.
Pretty, yeah.
Normal for that neighborhood.
No, the the my my point is, if the way this is drawn, you're not gonna be able to access this and come out and and get out of here.
Yeah, cause this, yeah.
I mean, how how many houses you built?
No, let me s- let me see.
How many houses have you built?
Here's what we got. Again, like I said to you, my bushes are over here.
Yeah.
My shed's here. This is, again, my drawing is off.
Yeah.
I didn't pull any plans because I'm pulling the, uh, cause I'm gonna pull the permit myself and build this myself. My house is here. Here is going to be the end of the the garage, correct? There's gonna be a garage door here, and there's gonna be a garage door here. This end of it is going to be for woodworking. So I'm not gonna be pulling a car into this end. I'm gonna pull my truck up straight, and she's gonna pull in here.
The other part.
And then if I'm, then if I'm moving it up, and then if I'm moving it up eight feet, that means I'm cutting into my driveway up here.
So so hold on, hold on. Yeah. Yeah, now, hold on, let me ask you a question. So from from this point here, right here.
Correct.
Down there, uh, twenty one feet. Is it, oh, yeah, I I oh, no, you're gonna put two twelve foot doors.
I'm gonna, once I, once, once I do the layout, I may have to change the doors.
I know, we need, we, yeah, we need to have, you gotta have it on. If if we work on a variance, we gotta know where it's gonna be. You can't, you can't just.
I'm not saying that the garage size is gonna be, the garage size is gonna be. It's gonna be twenty four by forty. I'll do twenty four by forty. If I have to be eight feet off the property line, then I'm gonna be eight feet off the property line, and then this is where it's going to land. Where my shed is, that shed's gonna come out. I'm gonna take the shed out and start from there. Where my abrevities go all the way down the property line, I'm gonna be at at my abrevities or a little bit further over this way to the driveway.
And that would be the minimal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, see, you got, you know, if he eliminates the driveway, I think you changed the character with that, is the hardship.
Cause no, what we need, what we need to know is, is we need to know, if I'm looking at your house.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm following your house down to your property line, problem, I'm away from your house, your corner of your house, down to your property line, is it a straight line?
My, well, my property line's not a straight line if you're looking at my plot plan.
Well, no, work with me. From your house down to the property line, draw a straight line. How much to the left of that line is gonna be garage? Hundred feet from the corner of your house.
So if I'm standing out in the street.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say probably fifteen feet.
No, it'd be more than that.
No, it's probably gonna be fifteen.
You can't get two, you can't get two twelve foot doors in.
I won't, I may not do the twelve foot doors. Like I said, I haven't pulled a plan yet or even drawn up a plan yet for the simple fact that I wanted to see if we were gonna get approved by.
We have to know what you're gonna put there, though. We can't approve something without knowing what's gonna be there.
Yeah, we we gotta approve something. That's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with you. We gotta prove something on paper, a plan.
Yeah. Okay.
That's why you gotta work with me.
And that will be the plan.
That that's.
Then that will be the plan.
The the old problem I got is, so what I'm saying is, if I'm facing your house to the left of the house, fifteen feet isn't gonna give you enough for two doors.
If it doesn't work, you're gonna have to come back before us.
So so.
Cause you won't be able to modify the.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Tom, Tom, you won't be able to modify the plan.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead, Casey.
I think that we've gotten a lot of good information here, and I think that we we understand what's going on, but this drawing is hard to.
Correct.
It's not to scale.
Would it be possible for you to, I mean, and I don't.
Correct. And I should have brought it with me.
Take care if it's a certified plot plan or anything, but if you could, you know, take graph paper and make it so that it's scalable.
I should have brought it with me.
That would, I think that would help us, um.
Could you get one? We can take a recess for.
Ten minutes?
Yeah, we can recess.
Ten minutes?
I'll shoot to the house.
Okay.
Go get a real plot plan.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, uh.
And I, I think you need to re.
Or what you have it would be better.
I.
Yeah.
I think you need to redraw it.
Well, no, I have, I have a print of the man, of the dimensions.
Cause we don't wanna run around, or you come back, you know?
Make a motion to. Make a motion to.
I'll just shoot to the house. I'll just shoot to the house.
Make a motion, uh, 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 for a. Make a motion, uh, 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 for a.
Take a recess. Take a recess.
Take a recess. Take a recess.
A limited recess. A limited recess.
Limited recess. Limited recess.
You don't come back in an hour, I'm leaving. You don't come back in an hour, I'm leaving.
Second.
Uh, five minutes. Uh, five minutes.
Second, yeah, go, go, go get a street ticket. We'll, 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 we'll wait. We're, we're gonna be, uh, pulling up. Second, yeah, go, go, go get a street ticket. We'll, 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 we'll wait. We're, we're gonna be, uh, pulling up.
Five minutes. Five minutes.
Is that camera, is this on? Is that camera, is this on? Okay. Thank you for, for doing it, go ahead.
So what I was, start to, I think what would be easy, and we may need to continue to next month, but if you took graph paper and just, you know, made it.
To scale.
You don't, you don't, I personally don't care if a registered surveyor or professional engineer stamps it, but if we had a plan that was to scale. That showed where you're planning to put the garage in relation to the house and the width of the driveway.
Okay.
You know, it would be great if it was done by a surveyor, and it is supposed to be, but this application was accepted.
Yeah, and, and, uh.
But we do have to have the, the size and the relation on, of these papers that we can, like, you know, say, this is, this is the plan, and that's how you're gonna build that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, what happens is, when, when a motion is made, and this is just an example, uh, make a motion to approve a, a setback variance, uh, for eight feet. Set, set it to the right side setback of forty feet. So that that, that tells anyone in the future that, that, that building is forty feet here, and goes forty-two feet, and it's eight feet here. So it, 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 it sets it on the property.
Okay.
Yeah, without, you need the distance on all sides.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that you could locate it. Other.
Got it.
Otherwise, it's a musical building.
That, yeah, and that's why I was trying to tell you, when, when, when you're facing your house, and you look right straight down, it's important to know.
I looked at that when I was just at the house, and it's, eh, eh, I gotta say it's twenty feet.
Yeah, see, it's, it's important to know that number from there to there, which will, you know.
Where were you planning on building? Cuz it's gonna start snowing, so it might get you four.
Well, they, they go wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I was hoping to start digging next week, but that was gonna be my Christmas present to myself.
I hate to run around Rosie, you know, I hate playing.
Well, we're, uh, I know when you.
Yeah.
I think it's stuck, and we gotta put what the plan is on there.
Yeah.
Especially when that closes the line, you know?
January sixth, January sixth.
And, um.
I mean, I, next, that's, that's the issue. I don't know if we wanna discuss it in general, or if we wanna wait to see.
I think we can discuss it in general, cuz I don't wanna, you know, eh, eh, I think we have to discuss if.
But I don't think.
There's a hardship. Then we can say, okay, legally, he meets a requirement for a variance, and then we go to, the next logical step would be, okay. How much of a variance would be the minimum?
But see.
But I don't think we can close the public hearing until he's submitted all of his evidence, so.
No, we can't close, but we can discuss, right? Procedurally?
But you usually close the hearing, and then we discuss and vote.
Well. Yeah, we use it too.
Do we have to?
I don't think, I don't think.
I don't think we have to.
Because, well, the rea- the reason you close is that if you have a lot of people that are gonna make comments, and, and this gentleman isn't gonna comment because he's not.
Well, it, it, it is the thing, we, we have to meet the legal standard.
And, uh. Yeah.
Okay? So I think he has a hardship if he loses his driveway, okay? There's nothing to say that he has to build a garage, but I think i- it's, it's within the, uh, boundaries of the law that if other. Houses within the neighborhood, within the character, have, uh, typically.
Every. Every house has a garage.
Have garages.
Well, and, 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 uh, you know, one of the other things that.
So, so, and again, that's the general scheme of zoning in general is.
And, and.
As well as the hardship with, with the slope, the topography.
Topography.
Well.
Wet, eh, you know, for the other part of his large lawn, you know, that's why he can't build a garage.
Now, it's, it's possible that he could build a one-car garage and squeeze it in there, or a smaller garage, but.
But with no objections from the neighbors, I.
Right, and you, you can't make it too shallow, right?
I don't have a problem with that.
So I think i- if we're in agreement tentatively that there is a hardship, and meets the legal standard for a variance on setback. Then we can go send him, you know, go get the witch's broom for us and come back. But I don't wanna send you on a goose chase if we can't cross that threshold. Is that fair enough?
Well, hold, hold on. Yeah, hold. No, 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 no.
Yeah, no.
Is that fair enough?
No, you're, you're honestly right. Now, let me, let me ask, uh, how, how long is your, your truck? I thought you had a ten-eccabon.
It's a crew cab.
A crew cab.
That's sixteen.
That's only sixteen?
Yeah. It's only a four, 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 six bed.
Oh, that's a, oh, got that little baby bed on.
Yeah.
Well, cuz I'm thinking twenty, twenty-four, I mean, you might, I, I've got a full-size bed without, and that thing's probably eighteen feet long.
Yeah.
So, uh.
You got a full-size, I know.
I got a fifty, a full-size truck, and if you, I thought you had a full-size truck with.
No.
So that, I mean.
With a plow.
Yeah, it's a twenty-four, that you're not gonna get that in there, you know, so, uh.
With a plow. You take the plow, and you just drop it off.
Yeah.
Well, I, you gotta, you gotta, wh- when you draw this, you've got to bring this as co- closer, as, as close to the street, uh. This silver street as you can. I mean, it has to be just as close.
Uh, well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna come off the house, I'm gonna measure off the house, and then I'm gonna start from there, and that's.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think, uh, Casey's suggestion.
I kinda have an idea of what we've, what we've been talking about, so I mean.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's why I had an idea, cuz I mean, I've been trying to plan this for a year now, as to have a layout, how to do it. Then I, eh, I said, you know, do I just tear off everything I did on the back of it, cuz I just remodeled the whole house? Do I rip everything off the back and attach it to the house? Financially, that's not gonna be, eh, 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 it's not gonna work. Could I do it? I could, without, without stretching myself where I don't wanna be. I did not wanna have it attached to the house. I wanna detached garage. But I didn't wanna lose the driveway.
Well, uh, could we, we do the same thing as we did last time and continue it? Is that how, how for that?
The good thing about the attach, you could almost have an in-law comment.
Yeah, right. They're probably watching, don't worry.
Yeah, maybe, maybe he doesn't want the in-law.
I know. No, they'll be my folks. Unfortunately, hers, hers has since passed.
It's a model R.
Yeah, well, uh.
Plus, then I'd have to put drainage and.
So we need you to ask for a continuous.
Continuance.
Uh, till the January sixth meeting, and then come back in with, with, uh.
How could I draw a?
No, we're just gonna use graphic book. I mean, I, I think Casey's.
I'll take my time.
You know, that supervisor's license, but usually a supervisor can submit drawings, and doesn't have to be a P E.
I'll take my time. I got some, I got somebody that'll do it.
You got somebody that maybe has a CAD, could make it nice and pretty.
I'll get it done.
And some engineering buddies or something.
I'll get it done.
But, but listen, you gotta, you gotta make sure that you get it as far.
I'm gonna be as.
Close you can.
But, like I said, I, again, eight feet was where I was with the garage doors and being, and being accessible. And minimizing the driveway, and that's where I was.
I think we need like numbers like this, you know?
Correct.
We need distances from corners.
You'll have it.
The, the, you know, property lines.
You'll have it from.
Because what happens, the house to the porch.
You'll have it. You'll have it.
We need dimensions on everything.
What happens, Peggy?
Label it like crazy.
Yep, you'll have it.
What happens is that that plan goes in a file and forever and ever.
That's correct.
You know, if, if, uh.
And if it's wrong.
Casey's doing a, a, a title search, ten years down the road, and, and, and says, oh, what happened? You go to the file, oh, there it is.
Yeah, no, I completely understand.
So this right here, we, we couldn't, we just couldn't, we didn't know.
Completely understand.
And if you build it in the wrong spot.
That's worse.
Yeah.
It, it, it ends up with litigation or something. If life gets ugly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
I got you there.
The safest way to, to peace throughout is.
So. Once you get approved for, but, but go out.
Yeah. I'll have it staked out in the yard, and we'll go from there. And we'll get all the measurements.
You need to take some pictures.
Yeah.
So print them out.
Time messing up the assets, you know, I hate to have you running around.
Nope, that's fine. It's the start of a new year.
Well, another thing is not denied either, so.
Maybe that's great.
The drawing's not that great.
Listen.
You don't give up your day job.
That, that one.
That'd be usually pretty easy on these things, like, you know.
Come on, please. It isn't that bad.
Somebody down at Smith Motors can right there, we do. We, we need, we need a motion to continue with that. I'll make a motion, continues to the January sixth, two thousand sixteen.
It'll only be a couple weeks.
That's fine.
You got this far. Casey, enjoy the holiday.
I'll draw it. I got two weeks.
All of the pay, all the pay. Okay, you're all set. We'll see you on the, on the sixth, okay? I think we're working in the right direction.
On the sixth. Okay.
We're working in the right direction?
Sounds good today.
All right. I love these.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you.
You can make popcorn next.
Why don't you get on the board? We get a lot of Mike.
Yeah, right, yeah, the money.
Hey, hey, Tom.
I can see him beating down the door.
You got an appetite.
We have, yeah, we, we did it last time, yeah. Yeah, we're looking for members if, uh.
It's, it's the toughest job you'll ever love. It's like a Peace Corps, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Don't you have to be retired to do it? Doesn't this just take a ton of time, for me, guys? Well, it, it depends on, on the little ones.
I, I miss my kids' uh, uh, violin concert tonight. So all the people, all the Grove Landers, you know, just feel my pain.
Girls of culture.
It, it depends on, 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 on the, uh, subject, yeah.
I wouldn't wanna do the chairman's job.
Some things are off-architectural, but, you know.
No, it's, it's not personal, but, you know, I, I, you gotta run the meeting, you gotta, you gotta, you know, you gotta move along.
And you have to fly the hours, not, you know.
What, what do you do?
I manufacture offices.
Oh, yeah.
I appreciate all your time.
Same type of thing. You, you have to be organized, otherwise it's just just forever.
Well, that's what happens, you know, and then, and so, I'm more director than, than maybe people like, I'm a black and white guy, and, and, uh. I've, I've, I've been doing it for over thirty years, so that, that.
I think that's how it is.
Well, I'm, I'm retired, and it just gives me something to do, to keep my mind going, and, but I don't, don't get senile, and, you know. Although, I thought people would worry.
Question that, yeah.
I'm not retired. I have a business and triplets. I'm just crazy.
Too late. Well, it sounds like a vacation. Just time off. You ever notice, when he gets done talking, he looks just like Donald Trump?
Who?
Probably vote for, you know, somebody that wants to secure the country and protect our borders and, uh.
He doesn't, he doesn't, Donald, Donald doesn't have a go-to.
Just be worried about what he thinks about us.
Okay.
We don't have the invoice.
Yeah, we do.
Oh.
Yeah, we, we got one invoice, so, let's, uh.
We get her, that's the end of the nation.
We do have an invoice, so let's get this going. We got an invoice for the. We're all set? Let's go to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see you, we'll see you next year.
We'll see you next year.
Yeah, we'll see you next year. How's that?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, that's a, it has a good ring to it, yeah.
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen, I got.
It's gonna be the year after the garage.
Uh, there you go, okay.
And a new holly in it.
Okay, there you go.
I already got that.
Thank you, guys.
That's all worth the money.
Thank you. Uh, okay, Eagle Tribune in the amount of two oh two.
We're not using the Herald yet?
You mean the Gazette?
The Gazette?
It's not gonna work out. The money's almost the same.
I'm sorry, they did it so small, I couldn't realize.
I'm jacked.
You guys couldn't see it.
Yeah, the guys and something else, I don't know. The North Shore Sunday.
Yeah, that's a local paper.
A free paper.
Right, North Shore Sunday? Oh, you mean George, no.
No, the one, you're gonna flip the box, then grab it, you know?
No.
I don't understand, but I don't.
You know what I'm talking about?
Okay, you got that?
Nobody knows what I'm talking about.
I do.
I don't, I live in a different world.
Yeah, you do.
We know that. All you, all you need is a, a light, light, uh, hair, and, uh, give it a go to you. Lap will be right with these assumptions.
She come in here with a shit gun, like, I'm bringing a new year.
Well, I thought this one here was gonna get done.
We need a motion for that.
Yeah, we need, we need a motion to approve the, uh, Eagle Tribune.
I approve to approve the invoice for two oh two.
For two oh two, for two oh two, made a motion, second, and second, all is a favor? Okay, how about?
Second, yeah.
Mark. How about a motion to, what you're, I'll make a motion, Jen, Mark, second, all is a favor?
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, yes. Hey, uh, you, you look, uh, good, I mean, you don't look that bad tonight.